One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of the meeting has been satisfied in accordance with Chapter 231 PL 1975 by advertising in the Home News Tribune, notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, and also posting on the bulletin board and filing with the Borough Clerk. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Kozinski?
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Bella?
Here.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Here.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Here.
Ms. Kassandi?
Under old business and carryover applications, I'm first going to call Ken Pate.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. Thank you. Our application is Sterling Tower, and it's on your agenda. We noticed and published for this evening, but we respectfully ask that the Board carry us to your May 28 meeting for the presentation, and we would also ask that you accept our notice and publication and not require that we republish.
I need a motion to carry this application to the May meeting.
Motion to carry.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kassandi?
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting will be next month.
Forward to seeing you next month. Bye-bye.
Our next application is 2507. It's 28 Felix Terrace. I have a little trouble pronouncing your last name. If you could please come forward. Would you tell the Board exactly what you want to do at the property on 25 Felix Terrace?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight Felix Terrace. I'd just like to put up a pole barn. It's basically just for storage for excessive things that we have in our yard. I have two children. I'm actually moving back to my mother's house. I sold my house a few months back. My father passed away two, three years ago, three years ago, and that's why I'm moving back. I'm moving back with my wife, my two children. We have a lot of stuff. I'm basically bringing everything from my other house to my mother's. So it's all her stuff plus my stuff. Again, it's just, we have a swimming pool. It'll be meant for all the pool supplies, all the pool things, all my kids' toys. We have big toys, and I just want to have a little workshop so I could teach my son little things, work on a lawnmower, work on little things that we have. I don't have a landscaper. I do all my things by myself. We do have all the equipment. You know, I have my snow blowers, lawn care, all that. It's just for an extra storage. That's about it. Garage is just not enough. My mother has her own things in there. We really try not to keep, you know, things that hold possibly gas or anything inside of the house. It's not, it won't, obviously, it's not just gasoline, just a little bit. I always empty things out, you know, in the winter and the fall. That's about it.
Are you going to put the pole barn up or is the contractor going to do it?
The contractor out of Pennsylvania.
And it's on the left side of the property all the way to the rear, correct?
All the way in the back.
Anybody from the Board have any questions concerning this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So it's on this diagram. It's listed as a garage. Is that the correct?
Yes.
Okay. But it's not going to be a garage. It's going to be?
I mean, it's a metal pole barn. It's completely metal.
Are you using it for a car or?
No.
Okay, so?
There's going to be no driveway to it, no cars, no, nothing like that.
And it's 24 by 32 according to the drawing?
Yeah.
And how far away from the property lines is it going to be? That's important.
Seven feet and seven feet.
Okay. Jay, do we need to mark that on the drawing just to make it on the record? And so it also, your rear property line is at an angle to your side property line, so that's where the seven and a half feet will be the nearest to the property line.
Okay, I mean, I could change anything, you know, anything you want me to do. The property in the back is large, so if you want me to shift it over a foot?
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's on the record correctly. And what's to the rear of your property? Are there homes or?
Just backyards.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We're all backyards. They're basically all the same size, so it's not like I'll be really close to another, you know, home or anything like that.
Okay, and then we always ask these questions. Are you going to have any electricity?
No.
Any plumbing? And is it going to be used for a business?
Absolutely not.
Okay, we just have to ask those questions. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board?
I have a comment. The pole barn that sits in the back of your property will be, is a lot bigger than what you're proposing, so this, I don't think, is a problem.
I also went down to the property and saw the location, and I don't see a problem with it either. Any other questions of anyone?
Right here. I mean, the minimum setbacks, which is agreed to do, but more than that, five feet is the minimum. He said seven, seven and a half feet from the rear and the side. I think that'd be ten feet from the nearest structure, not from the patio, pretty full when you pull itself. You didn't draw the pole barn on the scale, but I think even if I did redraw it, it still looks like you have plenty of room to work. And the issue is that the fifteen feet, it's a nice height of accessible use for probably sixteen and a hundred feet square feet for acceptable use of area, they're probably a seven hundred and sixty-eight. But again, it doesn't seem to be, the issue, a hundred fifty feet is kind of small, even for a lot of sheds down by fifteen, so I see no issue with this location or size. And this question, regarding structure, looking at the aerial photographs, there's nothing, no structure of a home engineer, it's an old backyard and go to the thirteen.
Correct, yes. I'm going to open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak and reference this application? Bearing none, I close the public portion. It's the pleasure of the Board concerning this application. I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Castle Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kassandi?
Hey, your application's been approved. We will moralize it at our next meeting, and you can proceed to put up the pole barn.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is 2506, 110 North Edwards Street. Please come forward.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Can I get your first and last name?
Man S. K. H.
How do you spell?
Yeah, M. N. S. U. K. H., and the last name is Jariwala, J.A.R.I.W.A.L.A.
Are you the property owner?
Yes.
Sir, would you tell the Board exactly what you want to do on your property?
My application is to extend the kitchen and front porch. We have a small kitchen, so we like to have, make it bigger.
You want to extend the front porch?
Yeah, four feet we want to extend, and that will be within the building.
So you want to extend the front porch and also make the kitchen larger?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
You have a contractor that's going to do this work, or are you going to do it?
No, we'll have a contractor.
Any questions in the Board concerning this application?
A porch or is it an addition? Because on the application it says front addition.
Front addition is a porch, yes. We have a five-foot porch. We want to extend four feet further within the building line because some in the storm, we have the, you know, snow drip and rain, you know, so.
So that porch you're going to extend to be equal to either side of the house?
Equal or less.
Okay. So it's not an addition. It's an extension of the porch. Correct?
Yes, extension of a porch. That's correct.
There's, on your drawing, there's a, you haven't read, new five-foot-high fence, but that's not part of the variance, is it?
No, that is not the part, but I saw, I would like to have the fence around because our neighbor has a fence too.
Okay.
Does that require any relief? That's five-foot fence?
He needs the zoning.
Generally, fences are four feet or six feet, but for the slot of rear yard, I think six feet is allowed by ordinance, but I wasn't reviewing the fence.
Yeah, you may have to come back and get a permit for the fence. I don't think necessarily, if it's permitted, the Board can. If it's permitted, we just go through the zoning officer. If it's not permitted, then you can come back here for another application.
I have another comment. Your survey is from 2006.
Yes.
Have you added anything onto the property? Like, when did you take ownership?
I took the ownership on 2011, and we added in 2018 the deck in the backyard, and I had a pool from the bowl.
Okay, so that wouldn't be on this survey.
You probably added that on the survey drawing. Yeah, it wasn't part of the original survey, but you sketched in on that old survey where the deck is, so you are showing it on the plan. What are the variances?
One variance, maximum dwelling coverage, like, forty percent is permitted, and probably twenty-six. Part of the, minimum of ten thousand square feet, a lot of oversize, they have thirteen thousand.
Can I, can I remove the fence for now? Can you let her?
So, you know, you can go in and ask the zoning officer for a second for a fence permit, and assuming that your fence is permitted, then the zoning officer will issue you a fence permit, and you can go build the fence. So it's not really part of this application.
Okay, so this is not part of the? Yes, yeah, okay, thank you.
The application, as you presented it to us, we'll hear it. It's the fence that we're talking about that you'll just go to the zoning office and get the permit just for the fence.
Okay.
The application is what we're hearing now.
Well, I got it.
Any other questions from the Board? No other questions. We're going to open it to the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak and reference this application? Bearing none, I close the public portion, and what is the pleasure of the Board in reference this application?
Move that the application be approved.
I second it, okay. I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Kassandi?
Okay, your application's been approved. You can, we're going to moralize it at our next meeting, and then you can start with your kitchen and your front porch.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Our next application is 2503 High Point Investments of Serval LLC Wawa.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Hugh McGuire. I'm the attorney for the applicant High Point Investments of Sayerville LLC. Application for the property better known as 880 Main Street, Sayerville. That's block 251, lot 1.01. And it's an application for both subdivision and site plan approval for the development of a Wawa gas station, fueling station, and convenience store. Engineer get set up. I've already provided copies of the notices and affidavit of publication to the Board Secretary.
Could you slide the exhibit down a little bit?
If you're ready, I'll just call our engineer.
Your name and your affiliate?
Yeah.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, you're under a, okay, and just state your name.
My name is Mark Shenoda, S.H.E.N.O.D.A. I work for Friendship Polo Associates, and I've been practicing a professional engineer in New Jersey for the last 13 years.
And Mr. Joe, you've appeared before this Board before, is that correct?
Not in Sayerville, no.
Not Sayerville, okay. You have to appear before other Boards?
That's correct.
And give a testimony on such applications.
That's correct.
I would move that we accept him as an expert?
Yes, we accept extensions.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Joe, why do you give the Board the basic overlay of the application and the property?
Sure. So the property is known as Block 251, Lot 1. It's located on the southwest corner of Main Street and Crossman Road. It has 576 feet of frontage along Main Street, while the remaining is along Crossman Road. On the western portion of the property, we have Burt's Creek. It's, we also have wetlands in this area, which we have approved through D, which was previously approved through DP, which we have filed the new application with them to, you know, determine the new line. There's also flood hazard area in the rear of the property. We have issued a line verification application with DEP based on the year, projected year 2100 storm events to ensure that anything that we're developing here is not impacting the flood.
Is this part of the site plan?
This is the subdivision plan, sheet two of the plans, yes. Sure. This one is, this one is a new sheet, so we can enter this one as a new exhibit if you'd like. Yep. Yep, the aerial.
But there is a problem with the groundwater?
In this area, there is groundwater contamination.
On that property.
Yes, and we are, you know, our engineering controls are separating any contact with that groundwater. The parking lot is serving as a cap. We are proposing two buyer retention systems here, which are going to be lined with a HDP liner to make sure that there's no contact with that groundwater.
But wasn't the part of the property, the EPA, it was under, like, remediation?
It was under, it's currently under remediation there. It's continuing remediation, exactly, yes. So the site has been determined clean by DEP. The groundwater is being subjected to injections by an LSRP. This will be going on for the next several years to slowly bring the concentrations of the contaminants down in the groundwater.
But you can still build there?
Yes, we've been given permission by the LSRP to build here with some engineering controls, like I said, the separation of the buyer retention system from making contact with that groundwater, just to make sure that none of that water, you know, migrates over to Burt's Creek.
And that was the only issue with the EPA, the groundwater?
Yes, as far as the soil, it's all been remediated, and it was mainly on the first transit portion of the property, and that's all been remediated and capped.
It's going to be, or it was?
It has been, as part of the first transit. There's no soil contamination as part of this portion of the property here.
You have any kind of certificates?
We have an RAO which we submitted to the Board Professionals, and we can submit that, sure, again.
Yes, I would like that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Sure. Exhibit A1 is an aerial of the subject property and areas within 200 feet. No, I didn't date the actual plan. No, that was just kind of brought for informational purposes. So the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two lots, forming this corner lot here in the front, which would be approximately 3.2 acres, leaving the remaining 13.3 acres for the remainder of the property. We're proposing to construct the Wawa on this portion of the property. We're seeking use variance relief in this area. We are in the industrial zone, and it's a, not a permitted, the convenience store and fueling station is not a permitted use in this area, so we are seeking relief for that. We are proposing to construct a, let me go to the next page here.
Which page would that be from?
Sheet, oh, sorry, Sheet 3, Sheet 3. So this next page here is a rendering of the landscaping plan, which is Sheet 14 of the set, just filled in with color here, so to be better representative of what's going to be built out there. We're proposing to construct a 6,732 square foot convenience store and the associated fueling stations. The fueling station will have six fueling islands with two pumps per island for a total of 12 pumps in this area. We're proposing a fly-through lane on the eastern portion of the building right here. People can come in, and this is a fly-through where there's no ordering taking place. It's strictly a pickup window only for mobile orders. So they would come in, the app would notify them if they're, you know, when their order is ready, they would come, pick it up, and just drive out. So we don't anticipate any queuing, and we'll have somebody from Wawa to testify about the operations of the fly-through area. Middlesex County is in the process of preparing improvements for this intersection, and part of those improvements include a right-of-way dedication from here, you can see this phantom line here, to here. And all the setbacks that were shown in the bulk schedule on the plans are based on that new property line, based on the dedication. The front setback is 119.3 feet to that proposed right-of-way. Side yard setback is 76.3 feet going to this property line here. This rear setback, I believe, is 226 feet to this property line. We're proposing two 30-foot-wide drive aisles. This one on Main Street is going to be a one-way in, one-way out. The one on Crossman Road is going to be right turn in, and then most likely left turn out, as there's nothing really on this side, other than the first transit development over here. The parking lot around the building will have 47 parking spaces. We have two ADA spaces, one loading space, three truck parking areas, spaces, which we're anticipating to be used by sort of like landscaping trucks, and we have one EV-ready space set up here per the state requirements for this number of parking spaces. We have a gated trash enclosure in the rear of the property here with gates. Obviously, the gates are intended to be closed at all times when this is not in use. I know the gates do kind of open into the driveline, but these will be closed, so make sure the traffic can kind of circulate through here. We're proposing 20-foot-high light poles and LED fixtures throughout the site to ensure proper illumination, to comply with IES standards and to be dark sky compliant. We're ensuring that there's no flooding on the neighboring property here. And here, there is a slight amount on Main Street here, but we feel that's going to help eliminate the road a little bit. The site has undergone a certain amount of clearing. We are proposing to, based on the tree preservation plan, to take down 192 trees that are here. Most of them are small caliper sort of junk trees. They've kind of come up fairly recently, so we don't think they have a very high environmental resource value. Stormwater on site will be managed by two buyer retention basins here and here. The basins have been designed to comply with NJAC 78 for water quantity reduction. We've designed the site to reduce the projected year 2100 storm event, which is, I believe, approximately 11.5 inches of rain in 24 hours. So this system is designed to manage that. The water will be treated by these two basins through a biofiltration media and then taken out to the discharge point that was proposed for the first transit site, and then eventually the water will go out to Burt's Creek. So overall, based on the improvements, we're reducing the flow, and we are also treating any of the stormwater that leaves the site for water quality and what they call suspended solid removal. We've met with Middlesex County for a pre-application meeting. They seem to be very positive about the project. One of their concerns is, obviously, with these proposed improvements, they want us to make sure we coordinate our utility connections properly. We have a couple of the water and the gas connections coming out onto Main Street, so they want to ensure that we make those connections without impacting the new pavement that they put down there. So those are one of, those are a couple of things that we've dealt with with the county, but they otherwise seem to be on board with the project. Per their request of the county and the request of the Board Professionals, we prepared a capacity analysis for the intersection here to determine the impact of the new development on traffic in this area. Main Street currently has a level of service of B in the existing condition. Crossman Road here, obviously, it's a very short road with the stubs right about here. Sorry? I, we do have a traffic engineer here. I am answer, I'm just kind of giving you an overview of the traffic impacts here, but if there are any specific traffic questions, we can, we can go to the traffic engineer for those. So I'm kind of giving just like an overview of the whole thing. So again, yes, Crossman Road has a level of service of C in the existing condition, based on, obviously, there's no, there's no thruway going that way. Based on the improvements and in addition, the first transit property, and keep in mind that they are proposing a new signal timing for this intersection as part of the county improvements, and we've done our counts and our analysis based on those new signal timings. So based on our analysis, the impact on Main Street is not, I wouldn't say it's completely minimal, but it's pretty minimal as far as maintaining the level of service. It will maintain the level of service of B for Main Street. We do anticipate a lot of the cars coming into the Wawa are kind of passing through this property anyway, so they're going this way, but they're kind of stopping off at the Wawa to pick up what they need, fill up on gas, and then leaving and kind of continuing on on their way. So that's why we're not seeing a huge, huge impact on it. We are seeing a reduction in level of service for Crossman Road from a level of service of C to D, but again, since it is a stub road, it is only a few hundred feet long, it ends right past the driveway for the first transit property. We don't feel that has, that's going to have any significant impact. The sanitary sewer on site will be connected to an existing main on site over here, and then brought off-site here and here. We've analyzed the sanitary sewer for capacity for this property and for the existing first transit property, and the system has plenty of capacity to handle that flow coming from both of these. Gas, as I said, gas and water service are going to be connected on Main Street, and obviously, we'll coordinate with the respective utility companies on where those exact locations are and coordinate with the county to make sure that it's not impacting any of the improvements that they're doing here. Regarding the waivers that we are proposing here, we have three parking within 100 feet of the front yard setback, so we have of the front yard setback, so we have this parking over here, which is within the front yard setback right over here. Parking within five feet of the property line, which we have in this area right here, these truck parking stalls are within about five feet of this new proposed property line. The first transit parking lot curb line goes right down here and kind of goes parallel to the power, to the new property line over here. I think it's off by about 10 feet. And we are also seeking a waiver from the hairpin parking striping requirement. We're using single stripe parking per, per Wawa's requirements in this parking area. Regarding sidewalk, we are requesting a waiver for sidewalk between the parking areas and the principal structures. This is kind of how Wawa has their things laid out. They have this whole area sort of as like one giant sidewalk with people kind of crossing through. We do have, for the fueling area, coming through here, a sidewalk and crosswalk kind of going through here, so these people can walk from this area over here without being, without having to walk into this drive aisle over here. Regarding landscaping, five-foot wide, we're requesting a waiver for the five-foot-wide building foundation plantings. It's not really, you know, part of Wawa's normal design. They, they like to see the sidewalk and the pedestrian access fully around the building, so we're requesting a waiver from that. 10% of the parking area is to be landscaped. Within the interior, we're not proposing any islands, but we are landscaping the areas around the parking as well. And then one shade tree for every parking space. Again, same thing, we're not really proposing any islands here. We're going to show the trees around here, around the parking area and within this island over here. The buyer retention systems are kind of showing as these green plantings here, but it's going to be a lot denser than that. We didn't want to show it because we thought it would make, it would make this plan really busy, but these are going to be planted with a lot of different grasses and shrubs and small trees to help with the water quality treatment.
I have a question.
Sure.
If you're removing 192 trees?
Yes.
Are you then, to prevent erosion, are you going to supplement with topsoil?
For the tree, well, as far as soil erosion, these, we're going to, as far as the entrances to these basins, they're all going to be rip, have rip, sorry, riprap aprons to avoid any, any erosion of the biomedia that's within these areas. And then from the output, we also have riprap aprons here to kind of attenuate the flow and have the water kind of go off the site without, without causing any erosion. So, and again, we'll, we'll, we'll implement the soil erosion measures as, as required by the standards for soil erosion control during construction and make sure we comply with the other requirements of offsite stability and, and things like that.
Do they need permits to remove that amount of trees?
Mr. Chairman, they need a permit, and they've got calculations on their plan. What they're doing is they're removing more trees than they're providing back on the site, so they have to make a contribution to the tree bank to offset that difference. I think it's approximately $30,000 contribution for the amount of trees that are being removed and not replaced on the site.
Yeah, the question.
Uh, if you look at where the gasoline pumps are, further to, further to the top of the drawing, what is that right there?
So this is a concrete pad. So these are the underground storage tanks for the fuel. So this, at the surface, is going to be a concrete pad with access, access ports, basically manholes. So when they come to fill it up, they'll lift those out and connect the trucks to them. But when this is actually built, it'll just look like a flat concrete pad.
That's where the trucks will pull in?
Yes, and we prepared, you know, our circulation plan on the last page of the, the plans, we did use a tanker truck coming into both of these entrances to make sure that they can navigate the site safely and comfortably as far as getting in, doing their filling, and getting out.
It's kind of tight.
It is, but again, these are 30-foot wide, they're 30, 30-foot wide lanes. We're also providing, like, for this island here, profoundly mountable curb, and, you know, so they can get on that curb if they need to for that one. And that one, this one will be a full-depth curb with, with landscaping.
So that pad that you're, that you're talking about there is just for filling up the, the tanks, correct?
Yes, it's just, they, they want an actual concrete pad on top of the tanks as opposed to asphalt, so.
Right, the cars that come in there to get gasoline will not go on that pad.
They can drive on it. This is part of the normal drive aisle right here. So it's, it's, when you're driving on it, it's just like concrete. Every Wawa has that next to their, their fueling station. It's just a concrete, it's just the, the pavement will turn to concrete, then back to pavement again.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I guess Mr. Kaczynski talked about the tanker trucks. Is there any way to restrict the hours that the trucks can come to the site for the deliveries of the, the fuel?
I mean, that's something I guess we could talk about with Wawa. I mean, I, I, I'm sure, I'm guessing that they come on an as-needed basis, you know, when they run out of fuel, they come and?
God, I don't, I don't know if you planned on showing the turning templates, but it is very tight, as was indicated. You're actually crossing some of the concrete islands.
Yeah.
And if that happens during a morning or noontime peak, you're going to have some issues with circulation on the site.
Okay, so that's something we'll have to talk about with Wawa. Okay.
What's behind that pad?
Here? This is just stone over here.
It's like you have some room. I mean, if, if it's tight, why don't you just expand it a bit?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not tight. I mean, we can, we can, we can widen this here a little bit, but we're, you know, we're trying to keep this area not too far, but this is how they normally landscape. They show the stone around this area, then they put these, these shrubs around it over here.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's not really the problem, Eric. The problem is swinging into the site, maneuvering around the building, and getting to that point, and then once you're there, leaving to get out of the site. And I don't know if you planned on showing your turning template, but maybe you should just so the board can understand the concerns.
Yeah, no, not on the, I don't have it on here. It's on the last sheet of the plans.
Okay.
Again, this, this here also, this is the extent of the sloped canopy that's over the, the fueling station. So as far as this area on the ground, there'll be actual cement and concrete, and the only other, you know, obstructions will be the, the kiosks here and the actual filling islands. So this area here will all be navigable.
When a car pulls in for gas, they, they pull under that?
Yes, they'll pull in under here, they'll pull in, and then pull in like right here.
And on the other, other side of that?
Yeah, or, yeah, on the other side, yeah, of this. So we, and we have three of those.
You can actually have six cars across?
We can have, yeah, so we could have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 cars, fueling at the same time.
One, two, three, four, five, six, they'll go in long way.
Well, it's, it, well, it's one, two, three, four, five, yeah, it's, it's, it's?
They'll go the other way.
Yes, it's, yeah, six and six, yeah, yeah.
That was kind of tight also, to be honest.
No, I mean, yeah, this is their, this is their standard layout. We didn't change this to accommodate the site. This is their standard gas, fueling area and canopy. So the other, any of the other Wawa fueling stations, this is, this is what they have.
Reason we're concerned is there's another property that we actually approved, and after construction, you know, it's a little bit more obvious how tight it is. And so we don't want to do that then, right?
Sure, no, we don't want to do that either. So, you know, we, we, you know, that's why we did get, do the mountable curb in this area, just to make sure if the tanker truck needs to mount on that curb, it's not going to be an issue, but we'll, again, we'll talk about the hours of operation to make sure that doesn't impact other traffic on site.
You, before you mentioned earlier, you mentioned a drive-in.
Yes.
Is it a drive-in or is it a fly-in? What is it?
It's a fly-in, so there's no order window. It's only a pickup window. So they would do the orders through the mobile app for subs or whatever they're usually getting. The app will notify them when the order is ready, and then they go up to the window to pick it up, and then they just drive out.
How backed up does that get?
We'll have somebody to testify about that. We have it set up for three cars, but we don't anticipate any stacking here, just because the idea is you're not ordering here, you're going to pick up and leave, so, and you're not supposed to go in here until your order is ready, so.
But you're going on the app?
Yes.
On my lawn?
Well, no, no, you got to do it before, and you can't go on, you can't just stand here and wait and order your food. It's going to take longer for that to get there.
I know.
I mean, it's something, I mean, as far as you using the app, knowing, you know, how long it would normally take.
I know that I could, if it, on my lawn.
If you want, we can bring the representative.
Yes.
They could, they could.
They could talk about that, yeah.
We don't really have all the details, we're not operators, but, you know, we're just struggling. Yeah, we're going to bring somebody up, but they probably have to go through a lot of it.
Yes, okay.
We're, we're guessing, so.
Yes, yeah.
Where, where's the entrance to the store?
The entrance to the store, there'll be on, on both sides, it'll be on this side and on this side. And then this area here is the loading area. So this is the striped loading zone.
So in other words, facing the entrance, one would be facing Crossman, one is facing?
One is facing Main, the other is facing the adjacent property. This side is the, is the fly-through lane, yep. So you park on this side, you walk in here, park on this side, walk in here. There's one EV station here. Based on the state requirement, we're required to provide one EV station per, for the first 50, 50 spaces. We had originally shown more, you know, some of the Wawas are showing that, you know, having that, you know, in some of their developments, but they don't seem to be getting it utilized as much as we were anticipating. So we're going with the, the state requirement here, and if there is that need that come, that comes up later on for Wawa to add more EV stations here, they could certainly do that.
So you only have one right now?
We have one proposed right now, yes.
At the best place to put the EV station?
Yeah, I mean, because we have it right next to the, this over here is also the, the air pump. So we have these islands set up, so they, you know, so if you park here, there's an island set up, a striped island set up right in front of the charging station, so you can, you have safe access to bring the, the wire and plug in your car here. And then on this side, same thing, we have a striped island adjacent to the air pump, so there's free room for you to walk around and fill up your, fill up your air.
They're slightly wider than the models.
Uh, well, I mean, if you include the striping, yes, but the actual, if, the actual spaces themselves are standardized 10 by 20. The striping is basically the same as a, an ADA striped island.
Can you just do, just put on the record, then be after the variance? Somewhere with one recited. That, that would be helpful, to make sure, just so you can just, give the list of the variance.
Sure. Okay, so obviously, the use variance, the bulk variances, minimum lot area, 10 acres is required, we're proposing 3.2. Minimum lot width for Lot A, 500 feet is required, we are proposing 332.5. Minimum lot depth for Lot A is 400 feet, we're proposing 165.9. Minimum front yard setback, I guess this is to, no, we're, I don't think we have this one. Yeah, no, that's not right here. Oh, that's the, that's the, that's the first transit property. Yeah. That, those are the variances.
First transit lot, that's existing, so that's setback.
Yep.
And then of course, the use of the variance.
This, this step up to the one that you put in with Bridge?
I'm not, I'm not familiar. Yeah, we're not, I'm not, I'm representative from Wawa, I'm, I'm with High Point and?
The property owner, they're bringing the allocation.
So you don't have?
You know, maybe, you know, let's, I was going to go to the planner next, but maybe let's bring up the, the Wawa representative, so we can answer some of those questions, and then that might be.
Wawa doesn't own the land? They rent, they're leasing it, or? How long's the lease, just curious? Anyone? Yeah? Want to ask? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think before the engineer finishes, we, we had a very lengthy technical review. I don't know that you have to go through each item. Do you have any issues with the comments?
No, we're going to comply with the requirements of the technical review. One of the other things with the backwater from Burt's Creek, we're going to illustrate that that's not being impacted, but otherwise, we were going to comply with the requirements of this technical review.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think the two big issues that we had are that how the fly-through operation is going to work and whether that's going to impact the circulation on the site. The second issue is, we had also asked for that capacity analysis at the intersection. When the county designed this revised intersection improvements, it did not anticipate a Wawa being constructed here. So they're going to have to work with the county and possibly revise the timing of that signal to accommodate the additional traffic that's proposed, especially on Crossman Roads.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll submit a full capacity analysis to you to for review, and it's going to illustrate some of those points.
So we just ask that any resolution, if adopted by the board, require them to comply with all the technical items in, in our report.
Yep, thank you.
I have one other comment.
Sure.
Is, is the entrance and exit on Main Street really necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if we only had the one entrance on Crossman, it's going to cause a problem in the backup. It is a one-way in, one-way out entrance, so that you can't leave that entrance and just turn left onto Main Street. It's only out, so any left turn access would be from Crossman if they're coming down this way. West on Main Street, they'd have to turn left onto Crossman and come in this driveway.
And, Mr. Chairman, I was involved with the pre-application meeting with the county, and I think there were concerns about having left turns out of that Main Street driveway. So county was okay with right in and right out, no left turns, everything. If you're making left in or left out of the site to get onto Main Street, it'd be through the traffic signal on Crossman Road.
One of the things they asked for was to make this island over here just a little bigger. They wanted us to extend it all the way out to the property line, so we're going to do that.
And they're trying to restrict people from trying to make left turns in off of Main Street.
Kind of make it impossible.
Yeah.
Was there a proposal for a walkway to the bus compound?
Uh, we did talk about that. The bus compound does not want to have an, another additional access over here just for security purposes. They have some issues with breaking, so they want to, want to avoid that. So we were talking about putting, again, we had this crosswalk going through, we were talking about carrying this through here and into the building, but it's not something they're, they, it's a security issue. So they're, they're fine with, you know, that most of those people are going to walk out and walk around, and we provided access here, so the sidewalk comes in here, they can walk down this way and then across through here.
What about for Main Street? If people are walking on the existing sidewalk that's there, do we just go into the driveway?
I mean, right now, this, this slope over here is kind of steep. We could, we can show an access over here. One of the things we talked about was eliminating this parking stall here, just to have this island a little bigger here, so we can sort of try to make that work through this and bring it in here, but if that's something that the board requests, we can, we can try to make it work.
I think that was discussed during the technical review process, and I think that's, must have been Mr. Fowler's report, but there was discussion about Main Street townhouse residents, if they wanted to get here, how would they safely get into the site? There was some discussion about having an additional connection between the Main Street sidewalk, somehow getting to the building.
And that's something we can provide. Again, we have, we have this one up here, there is a sidewalk that's going to be coming through, I think it's a disconsistently sidewalk over here, so they can come in through here, but if, you know, if the board would like us to provide an access over here, that's something we can do.
A lot of residents to the, to the north, too, in, in a few months, after those buildings are complete.
Yep, so. One parking space, yep.
And, and your, your loading dock for the, the store is, is right there?
Yep, this is it right here, this whole area, this whole striped area right here.
Will a, will a car be able to park there?
No, it's not, I mean, not permitted. We're not allowing cars to park there. It's striped, it's got diagonal striping to prevent parking there.
There is parking across.
There's parking across from it here, and then adjacent to it over here and here, but this whole area is, is striped to prevent parking.
What kind of trucks are you talking, that's going to be loading?
Uh, small tractor-trailer trucks. You know, we're anticipating trucks either the same size or smaller than the tanker trucks that we have, you know, that we're showing the circulations for. So we feel that since, if the tanker trucks aren't going to be able to circulate the site, the trucks that are going to be providing the loading and some of these other things like the dumpsters shouldn't have any problem navigating the site either. And we'll coordinate with the fire chief as well, just to make sure that the, the fire truck that they want to use here does circulate the site, and we'll, we'll provide a temporary template for that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe the same concern about the tanker trucks and having off-hour deliveries, I don't know if that's feasible with your?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we're going to have to discuss, yeah. I honestly don't know the hours of operation as far as the tanker truck deliveries. That's something they're going to have to testify to.
Do you have an operations representative?
Yes.
One of the concerns I have is you, if you have two or three tractor-trailers show One of the concerns I have is you if you have two or three tractor trailers show up at the exact same time.
Right.
You got a problem.
No, I mean, again, the site's not designed for for tractor trailer parking. You know, the idea is not for them to park here. Uh, we do have large parking spaces here, but these are meant more for sort of landscaping trucks with trailers. There's no real tractor trailer parking here um on the site.
I'm talking about tractor trailers that are gonna be loading stuff into the.
Well, I I don't think that's gonna be, I will have to talk about, uh, you know, we'll have we'll testify about that, but I'm not sure as far as how many trucks are gonna be here at the same time to do deliveries. I don't know if that's gonna be a problem or not.
Okay.
What about signs? I think you briefly touched on signs can get a little bit more specific where the signs will be.
There are gonna be building mounted signs to direct people uh for the fly through. We are gonna have stop signs or stop bars at uh, you know, the intersection of all the driveway areas. One thing that the you had mentioned during your review is you want to make sure that we had we inform people coming down Crossman Road here that they need to turn right here to get into the Wawa. So we do want to provide signage for that. We're gonna be doing that as well. But.
You have a sign that says how much the gas is and.
Oh, you mean the other one? Yeah, we have the the actual uh, yeah, the 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 lit sign is gonna be right over here. It's shown in that box right there. And I'll show the gas prices, and that's the the normal, the Wawa sign you see at their entrances.
Just the one sign?
Over here, yes, it'll be right at the corner.
What about where the entrance is when you're coming off of Main Street?
We're not proposing a sign down here, I don't believe.
You're not?
Oh, no, we are, sorry, sorry. Yeah, there is a sign right here as well. I believe this one's gonna be a smaller one, though.
Smaller one with pricing also?
With pricing, and there is one up here as well.
So there's three?
There's three, I'm sorry.
They they seem to be uh close to the the property line, are they?
They're gonna be behind the property line here.
They require a waiver or variance?
Um, I don't believe so. I guess we may have to make sure that they meet the site triangle requirements, but otherwise, um, I don't believe they uh they will require a variance.
I believe it's a, I think it's a ten foot minimum setback for the signs.
Yeah, I think, and we have that. Yep. We're showing and we're showing the landscaping around there, but yeah, from what I'm seeing here, we have ten feet.
And so what about lighting on the site?
We are showing, we have a lighting plan prepared, it's part of the set. We're doing it with some building mounted lights here, and there's gonna be pole mounted uh lights around the site over here. They're uh twenty feet high with LED light fixtures. But we have the lighting plan, it'll show you the full distribution of the lighting on the site. We have no bleeding going in here. We have no bleeding going here, we have maybe one point one, point two foot candles on Main Street to help illuminate this area as well.
They'll be on all night long?
Yes.
It's open twenty four hours?
Believe so, yeah.
So they'll be on all night?
Just a correction, Mr. Chairman, uh, the minimum setback is for a sign is half of the front yard setback. So the front yard setback is fifty is a hundred feet, so the sign setback will be fifty feet.
Let me give you itself.
So um, you have you have fourteen feet and eight point nine feet, and then you have like five point some odd feet for the Crossman Road sign.
Okay.
So you would need variances for the setbacks, and then the height, the maximum height would be is ten feet.
Okay.
And I think you're proposing twenty for at least one of the signs. There was no detail that I could find for the other two signs, so I wasn't sure of the height on those.
Okay. I'll make sure you get those.
And are there any signs on the building?
Yes, there will be signs on the building, yes. I do have.
Are they they require variances or they within?
Yes, they require variances because it's in the industrial zone, I think allows one sign, one hundred square feet, and they have signs on all four sides of the building. They have a sign on the canopy, they have signs on the pumps. Uh, so does they're far from meeting the sign uh requirements.
Be clear, it's freestanding sign, we don't have the free proposed. One building sign, and they have four proposed.
I think there's one building sign with one hundred square feet allowed in the um industrial zone, and they're proposing um multiple ones. I'd ask for the for this meeting that they provide the details of how many signs and what variances they would need for the signs. So except I don't, it's hard to tell exactly how many signs they have on the on the site between the building and when the freestanding signs.
Clarify. Yeah, no, I'll provide sign details as part of the uh. Well, I mean, the board has to know what variances there are or not there. Whether or not your sign details, you know, require variance.
Just on my number seven in my report, um, on page four, uh, only one freestanding sign is permitted. I had while two, or proposed is actually three, and only one building sign is permitted. Well, signage is proposed on all four sides of the of the convenience store, on the gas canopy, on the pumps, requiring variances. The required signage variances should be listed on the plans and the general notes, so um.
And this is the sign that we're proposing at the two driveways.
Okay, and the one that's on the corner of Crossman and Main Street, I thought that was gonna be your sign with uh the pricing. So is the one, the two driveways, is that the one showing a twenty feet, or is that the one on?
Yeah, these are twenty feet, and the bottom foundation is seven feet by three.
So ten feet would be the maximum height. So the one at the corner of Crossman and Main Street, then how high is how high is that one? All three twenty feet?
These two are twenty feet here. Just one. We talked today, you know, answer on that.
Anybody watching?
That, again, that might be a question we could speak to the Wawa representative, he was probably know better what they usually put on these sites. That we're getting that information from them, so.
All three sides will be twenty.
The area of the signs are also the same, or?
What you're saying is that three signs that they're a uh price signs, they're gonna be twenty feet?
I guess the question that this twenty foot high on Crossman, the sign on Crossman Road. I'm not sure the purpose of that sign, since really anybody that's coming in is gonna be making a left from Main Street, and they'll see the sign on the corner. Yeah, the the Crossman is a dead end road, there's just a bus depot and an industrial facility across the street. I'm not sure what purpose that's serving, but you may want to have someone just comment on that.
Okay.
Okay, so what, let me just explain, they could they could do one and one, so I think it may be they could do the twenty foot on Main Street. There would have to be the larger one on Main Road on Main Street, but on the Crossman side, they can just do a monument sign of ten foot. So that would not be an elevator, it would just be a ten foot high long monument, so they could do that as as an alternate.
With the gas prices?
That would have the price, alright, that, yeah, that would be the same.
The question is the engineer, I just had asked or commented, I've made. You have a sign at the corner of Main Street and Crossman with the pricing on it. You have a sign at the entrance on Main Street with the pricing on it.
Well, I think what we could do is we eliminate the one on the corner. So we eliminate the corner side and have the the larger sign at the entrance.
Here.
On Main Street entrance, near the entrance.
And that ten foot sign here.
Monument at the Crossman entrance.
Okay, so so one sign, put me ahead. Or one on the main highway.
The one on Main Street.
So you're removing the one at the corner, which I think is probably a good idea, because that's gonna have red lights and signals, and it's gonna be and it's gonna be congested there with signs.
Okay.
So I think that's a good idea, at least that's my opinion, to to move the sign away from the signaling aspect of the road.
That's fine with us.
So now we're talking two signs, correct?
Two signs.
One ten feet in height and one twenty feet in height.
Correct.
Both at the driveways.
Correct, Main Street twenty feet, Crossman Road ten feet.
Jay, in your report, there was a lot of discussion about slopes and bonding.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's technical items, it just has to do with the grading of the property in certain areas. I think that that's really cleanup, we had work on the plan, nothing that warrants real detailed discussion by the board, they've agreed to address the comments.
But it can be resolved without any major issues?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just, um, I had questioned the pedestrian cross access between the site and the pedestrian, uh, the bus depot also. And when they came back, second second meeting, they had said the bus depot, they didn't want to provide it for security reasons. But looking at the site, there is a gate there, and the gate's kind of right in the the place where it should be if you want to have cross access, and the gate is locked. So it would seem that if they wanted to control it, they could lock the gate, you know, when they close at five o'clock, six o'clock at night, and then you wouldn't have an issue with people coming back and forth in the evening. So what and the other thing, you have three spaces for larger vehicles. If the people at the bus depot are too lazy to walk all the way around to come in and drive the bus over instead, three spaces for larger vehicles aren't gonna be uh quite enough. So what I I'm just proposing is that on your plan, you show future possible cross access in the location of the crosswalk lining up where the gate is. And the bus depot may find either because the employees are complaining, or because they're finding a bunch of buses are sitting over on the Wawa site in the morning before they go out, whatever, that they would like to do the cross access. Again, it's just a matter of locking the gate uh at the end of the day.
Okay, that's I can I can discuss that with them, sure.
Again, it would just be a matter of you showing as as possible future access without, right? As long and and it turns out a year from now, six months from now, if this is approved, that they want to go through with it, then you can go ahead and, you know, make the improvement, you know, with the engineers' coordination.
Okay.
And Jay or Mike, they're they're subdividing this lot, so right now it's a large one lot, and they divide they're dividing it into two. Is there are there any issues that we should be concerned about that, or is that very simple, straightforward?
Other than all the fact that the the lot for the Wawa is undersized, it's supposed to be ten acres, it's three point two two, I believe. Um, and then you have a lot width issue, I think also. Um, so a couple of variances for the the lot where the Wawa's going. Uh, the wa- the larger lot where the bus depot was, I think because you lost the frontage on Main Street, they wind up with a front setback variance on Crossman. But from that standpoint, I don't understand any issues. Jake, probably speak better to the subdivision overall.
No, I I would agree, I I think that also you have a lot of environmental constraints to the rear of the bus depot property. So without what's constructed, you couldn't shift it further back on the property. So they they basically worked around the environmental constraints, and now the leftover piece that has the frontage on Main, that's what they're using for this property, and it's a subdivision, and you're resulting in some variance because of the lot size. So did.
Actually, the that issue about the building and where it was located was part of what we testified to at the planning approval of that building, of the transit building, that that they come up, that it could not get shifted back.
I think there was always intention to have another development take place in front of the site. There were different things talked about over the years, so I think it was always intended, whether it be one single property and two different leases, or whether it be subdivided in the future in the future, I think it was always intended to have something else take place there.
And it's ten acre requirement, is that because of the industrial zone?
That's really what what the intention was, yes.
The Wawa is more commercial, they would require a lot less area, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But this subdivision has been approved.
That's part of this application, yeah.
So you'll approve that if you approve this application.
Chairman, just, so you're agreeing to my recommendations and comments in my report?
We'll call on as a future a future cross act.
But I'm saying all of the comments that are in my report.
Yes, yes.
And then just I had a section with the zoning table where actually the you satisfied the lot depth, because the on the corner lot, the width is the shorter frontage, and the depth is the longer frontage. So if, again, when you resubmit, if you redo the zoning table, I can work on it with you if you need be, but I tried to make it clear
Okay.
in my notes if I could.
Yeah, I think we we set it up where we're saying we're not calling out any any rear any rear yard here, it's only gonna be side yards and front yards, correct?
Well, no, you have a you have a rear, the rear yard is opposite the shorter frontage.
So that'd be here.
You have one, you have one side yard, one rear yard, and then you have two fronts.
Yep, so.
So you just have to change.
Rear, side, front, front.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I just had mentioned the the canopy as a structure would need to meet the front yard setback, and that's a hundred feet, I think you have seventy something feet for the canopy. And then uh the same thing, the trash enclosure is accessory structure has to meet, I think, half the required setback.
Okay.
It needs to be seventy five feet, you've got like five feet, so those two things needed to be added.
Okay, from any from any property line? The five feet.
Um, accessory use, required to provide half the required side yard setback, in this instance, the required side does seventy five feet, the opposite of the trash enclosure, two point five feet from the property line.
Got it, okay. Right.
And then there's something in the ordinance about the number of gas stations within certain miles, they're they're okay with that?
We'll have our planner testify on that as well, okay.
Craft enclosure, accessory structure, and canopy front yard, are those being classified as variances or weird?
I would call them variances for setbacks.
Both variances, right.
So if if the if the attorney and Mr. Chairman's are, if the board approves the application, I guess we could approve the sign package that the signs are being shown, but between now and the time the resolution is drawn, we have to know exactly what the variances are, you know, for all the signs. And I said, I I'm not sure that's something I can do, because I can't really tell how many signs there, you know, are and what what they are. There's coffee cups on the building and other things that I uh I'm not really sure of. Do you follow what I'm saying? So if the, I think if you show the ar- architectural plan, you can show all the signage that's on the building, on the, you know, on the canopy, on the pumps.
They're they're mounted to the building, yes.
Approving the, you know, the signs as shown on the plan, and then we need to, between now and the time the resolution is perfected, to list all the variances, so the attorney can put that into the resolution.
Okay.
Then the can, there's a canopy sign, correct, and then there's signs on the, Wawa signs on the pumps themselves.
There's the uh Shremer sign over here. Um, so that's gonna be between, basically right over the kiosk on each lane, but that is, those are the only signs, well, obviously there isn't a pump here, but this is the only elevated sign that'll be on the canopy. And there'd be three of them.
And another item, uh, there any outdoor seating and eating areas, tables, benches?
We 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 had talked about that with Wawa, that's something they uh were against as far as, they've had issues on other properties where there's loitering going on, you know, people making deals, things like that in their uh their sitting areas, so it's something they wanted to avoid.
There's no, there's no.
There is not, yes.
What about inside?
I don't believe there is, no.
That would be a management.
In my report, I just asked for one bench and a bike rack, you know, on the site at an appropriate location.
Okay, we can do that.
We talked about the tables, someplace for people to gather outside, but again, they said Wawa had an issue with that.
So if 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 you agree that there's no tables, then that means you can't install them in in the future without asking.
Correct.
Correct.
Do they have plans to get the lot in future?
It's the young lots, the the lot that the building is on, that's already constructed.
Yeah, this is already constructed here. To the right, it's a lot of environmental constraints.
To the left is the left of the left of the street, the right is the transit.
Yep.
So when when this is subdivided, there'll be two owners?
Still, still be one owner.
But the business, the Wawa and of the bus terminal, they're completely independent?
Correct.
So the bus company is the one who owns all of the property, and Wawa is is leasing it?
Bus company is also, also.
That's a lease also? I see.
They were actually, uh, it's a High Point investor, he's a he's an owner, he used to live here in New Jersey, now he lives in Florida, originally from here. Yeah.
So he owns he owns the entire?
He owns that whole lot.
Entire thing, yeah. And he's renting out both of them.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the transit was another location previously.
Yes.
Right, so they they needed more space, a bigger area, that's what prompted this whole property being developed, which makes it, their need for the addition of space. So that's what that, you know, brought them on site, you know, this was always the intention, as I said, even when we were here the last time, and we're having that approved, it was always intention to do something with the front, but at that time, we weren't sure. it was always intention to do something with the front. At that time, we weren't sure of what you, what we could do, what we would do at that point in time. So this, this came up as another opportunity.
And you're saying that the lease is 50 years?
Uh, no, I think this one is, I think it's 20 and I believe the back one, I think it was 20 as well, maybe even longer. They might have even some additional options because they were, they were a long-term tenant at the other property. They were the manager.
And the Wawa is 20 years?
The Wawa is 20, yeah. I, I don't want to say sure, but I kind of remember it was 20.
Do you want to proceed?
Yeah, if there are any other questions, I'll run, let's bring up the.
I can't. Good evening. I do.
Just if you state your name and your position?
My name is Michael Redell, R E D E L. I am a real estate project engineer with Wawa.
You're familiar with the site and what's planned, correct?
Yes, I am.
So if you maybe, you've heard some of the question the board members had, I think the one big question was the fly through and how that operates. So if you can maybe explain that to the board members?
Sure. Just first, a little background on myself. In four days will be my 27th anniversary at Wawa. I've been a real estate engineer, getting approvals for new stores for most of that time. Was the engineer for most of the stores that are closest to here, South River, Route 9 in Sayerville, Woodbridge, Edison, so all around. So very familiar with operations and what it takes to, to build a Wawa. Having said that, fly through is new. So fly through is new for us. We've tested it twice and based on those tests and the popularity of the program, we're rolling it out at every location. Fly through is a branded term that Wawa is using. All it is, is a mobile order pickup window, as Mark explained. So our customers order on the app. They order ahead of time and they arrive at the store, they pull up to the window and, and there's a, there's an indicator, like you, you come across as you enter the fly through lane, there's a buzzer inside, says that someone's at the window and the associate will come over right away, get your order number and then bring you your order and then off you go. So that process takes about 30 seconds. It's getting, it's coming down as we get more used to it and, but, but we're doing really well. Chipotle does it a lot. They call it Chipotleane and they're best in class in the industry. So we're trying to catch up. To your question, if you pull up there and, and you didn't order and the, the associate that comes to the window will ask you your order number and you, maybe you'll say, well, I didn't order yet. They'll ask you to pull into a parking space, explain how to order. And so you can pull over, do that, and then, then you'll be notified when your order is ready. On the app, you have the choice. I use that all the time. And I use it for mobile ordering because one of the test stores is near me. So I'm very familiar with this. But you can order anytime at any Wawa on the app and then you walk in and pick it up. That's very convenient if you want to get other things that aren't available on the app. But this is, this is a convenience that we think is just some, another offer for our customers that don't want to get out of the car. Maybe they have kids in the car. Maybe they're just in a hurry. They've, they've ordered on the way. They're, don't really want to park and go in the store. So that's, that's what it's all about. We provide stacking for, I think it's at least three cars. We haven't seen more than two cars. We don't expect to. If the stacking does get to beyond three where it goes into the drive aisle, then, you know, we ask, just like drive-throughs do, they ask the person at the front to go park and we would bring them their order. That hasn't been our experience. I don't think it will be because it's just not a drive-through. It's more, usually when people show up, their, their food or their drinks are waiting for them. So that's, that is fly through. If I didn't cover anything, you know, I welcome any questions.
Okay, tell me again what the 30 second window was?
So that's when a car pulls up to the window. Within a few seconds, usually an employee will come over, ask you for your order number. You'll tell them your order number and they, they will take it off the shelf because there's a rack right there that houses mobile order pickup. And they'll hand it to you and off you go. So that, that span is, is 30 seconds. And sometimes it can be a little longer. If the order's not ready, then perhaps it would take longer. But again, we monitor stacking. So if, if the stack, if there are multiple cars waiting and say someone just ordered as they're driving onto the lot, they have someone in their passenger seat that just ordered five smoothies and then they pull up to the window, five smoothies aren't going to be ready that quickly. So we would ask that person to, to park at the designated spot. And again, that interaction would take 30 seconds, right? Just like, oh, your order's not ready. Would you pull, pull aside? We'll bring it to you.
And I can see in the morning especially, multiple cars going in there. So if I drive in, there's a bunch of cars in front of me. There has to be a backlog.
Yeah, we're, it, we're not, unfortunately, we're not Starbucks. You know, you see that at Starbucks a lot.
I see it at Chick-fil-A.
We're not Chick-fil-A.
But it's very popular and a lot of cars go in there.
Right.
And your order is not ready in 30 seconds.
And then we would ask you to, to pull to the side. So we've, we do have experience with this. We've tested it at two, two locations in New Jer, well, one in New Jersey, one in Pennsylvania. And we, we rarely have more than one car there at any time.
Now, this is Woodbridge you're talking about?
No, it's, that's West Hampton in Burlington County is the test store. And there's one in Langhorne, Pennsylvania.
Payment is not being made at the window. Payment, everything is done on the app. So the only thing they're doing at the window is actually taking the order.
Not even. Yes, handing, handing the order through the window. That's all that's happening. Thank you for the clarification. So when you order on the app, you have to pay before the order will go through for fly through pickup.
You also have a, there's also, because I do it a few times, there's a time. So it's not like everything's ready immediately. I'm sure your, your algorithms, you know, you can do it 15 minutes. It tells you 15 minutes, 20 minutes.
Yes.
So it staggers it. I'm sure it's going to stagger it, stagger it. You know, it's not going to let just everybody come in at this, you know, 10 minutes from now, the next 10 orders that come in. I'm sure you figured that out by now.
And you can imagine that, you know, Wawa's a successful business. We've been around a long time. We've, we've tested a lot of products. Things have worked, things haven't worked. And we want to keep that going. And having cars stacked out into the driveway, blocking circulation around the store is the last thing we want. So we wouldn't, we're not going to let that happen, which is why we have the alternative that if stacking gets, you know, three cars, we're going to ask people to, to park and we would bring them their order.
I think in the beginning it'll be an issue. People will learn. It's going to be an issue in the beginning. There's no doubt about it. Because, you know, they're learning. Those are all new people training. You know, we, you know, I didn't know what a fly window was or a dry fly window was, you know, you figure, but it's a great concept.
Thank you.
It's a great concept. The only problem I have from a business standpoint, far be it from me to tell Wawa what to do, but your impulse items have to go, you have to prop exponentially, I would think, but.
Well.
That's not, that's your business, not mine.
Yeah, so actually when people order on the app, they actually spend more.
Really?
Than, than people that go in the store. So it's, it's a, it's a win-win. As long as you're coming to Wawa, then.
Are they limited to the number of items? I mean, can they get a jar of peanut butter or?
Uh, the app has some of like candy bars, sodas. They will, you know, go out into the store and gather, but it's not the full, it's, it's not everything. I don't think you can get beef jerky or peanuts or, if you want those things, you're just, you'll park.
And food items?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And you only have one window, am I correct?
Yes.
One window?
Yes. So there is a, there is a bypass lane. That's why there's two lanes here. It's not like a Chick-fil-A where they have two lanes and people picking up in both lanes. This is just a bypass in case someone comes in here by accident and they, they real, like they intended to come around the corner and they turn in here. We don't want customer frustration that they have to wait for this to clear out to leave. So we have this, the second lane is merely a bypass lane for that rare customer that, that goes in there by accident.
I'll give you a hypothetical situation. You get somebody who has an app and they phone it in and they go in. And when they get there, they get the order, they say, geez, I made a mistake. I wanted six instead of five. What, what do they do then?
Well, in that, in that case, we would ask them probably to come in the store. We would say, well, here are your, here are your options. You can pull to the side. You can do a second order for the items that you forgot. Or come on in, order at the screen and go through that process.
Okay.
I can move on to the myriad of other questions that people have. No?
When ordering on the app, it is excluded from tobacco products and electronic cigarettes?
I don't believe there's any cigarettes on the app.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think by law, I, I don't want to speak to that, but, but yeah, no.
Thank you.
Did you say that when you place your order on the app, you get notified when your order is ready? Or you just come, you think your order is ready?
Um, so what I've been told is that as, as this, the software has developed, you'll be told when your order is ready. I'm not sure that's available now or not. When I've used it, I never look at that anyway. So that's why I can't say I just order and go and it's there.
Mine pops up. So just to give it, mine pops up when it's ready. It says, you know, your order is ready with a big okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so the soft. So the soft, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so the software is.
This shouldn't take long at all. The, the order is on a rack there. There's a window right here. Car pulls up, you hand it to them and away they go, right?
Correct. So 30 seconds sounds, you're probably thinking like, how, how is this happening in 30 seconds? That's how. It's, it's there, it's ready. It's just passing through the window.
And I think that's why I asked the question, for me just even trying to, first I'm offering across it, is you know, if you think of a drive-in, you're, you're coming up to the window, placing an order and paying for the order, then picking up the order. In this, you're just picking up and paying the order and it's all done.
Correct.
Does the app specify that? That was my question.
Yes.
On the app that it says this is not a drive-through, a drive-up order, you know?
Yeah, so you're ordering, you'll have an option of in-store pickup or, or fly through. And you select fly through and, and then you'll know that you're picking up at the window.
Didn't you have a Wawa in, in Woodbridge, correct?
Oh, yeah, a couple.
Didn't you just last week appear before the planning board for a fly-through window?
Yes. So we're adding, so I, that wasn't me. I just do new stores, although I did that, the approval for that store when it was new. We have a team that's going in and retrofitting open stores to add the fly-through window. And that was approved in Woodbridge.
So you're, you're starting to do this with a lot of the Wawa stores? You're adding these fly-throughs?
Everywhere. So this, this is, this is the new Wawa. This, it's going to take us a while. We have over a thousand stores. But every new store will have it. And then we have a team that's going back and, and putting it into older stores where, where it can fit. It can't fit everywhere, especially with older designs where it wasn't, you know, it wasn't, just not room for it.
Is the Wawa in South River, well, the base of South River Bridge, is that staying open?
No, no. So this is, this is.
That's one of your busiest stores.
It's, it is. So you know that store. It's been there 45 years and that is our older model. So that's, that's what we're replacing. We've been replacing for as long as I've been at Wawa, trying to upgrade our facilities. So you know how small that is, how tight the parking. It's not our full offer inside. This, this store will have public restrooms. It won't have seating, but it will have public restrooms and fuel, of course, and much more parking and, and fly through. So we had under contract for many years, a site out by the, the church and where the Bass Pro, the Epic Church and the Bass Pro, we're actually going to go right next to the Epic Church and that fell through. I like this location better because it's, it's closer to town. You know, town we've been serving for a long time. So to be closer, I think that's, that's better.
So the store, the store by the bridge in Sayerville is going to close and this new one is going to replace it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And it'll happen the same day. So we'll, we'll, we'll turn the lights on in this one if we're approved and same time we'll, we'll shut the lights off there.
And what are you going to do with the building? Rip it down?
Uh, I believe we own it and we would sell it. So if any owned property like that, we would sell.
I see.
Would you have the objection for signage to be installed near that fly-through? Maybe do not block parking spaces, do not block circulation aisle. If, if cars are to this point, please enter the store, things like that to keep, because that's, that's a main circulation path. And if your cars are blocking that circulation aisle, that's a problem. Or if they are wrapped around the corner, blocking parking spaces, that's a problem.
Uh, yeah, I think we can, we can come to some agreement. So there will be a sign, just like a, you know, an onsite sign that says fly, for a fly-through customers only. You know, are you thinking maybe like a, this is striped, there's a do not block the box maybe or?
That's a possibility. Something to make people aware that they shouldn't back out and block that circulation or wrap around the building and block the parking places.
Right. Like if you're part, if, if you're right here, go around.
Or come into the store, something to that effect. But, but even like you say, just do not park in this area. Do not block the box, as you called it. Something to try to keep people from not parking in that area when they're waiting on their fly-through line.
Okay, I'll take that back. We'll come back. We'll propose it on the next set of plans and I think we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
How many cars can go from the Main Street entrance around to that pickup window?
Around here?
Yes.
I, I have no idea. It would have to be 20 or more. And the only way that's ever going to happen is if we, we have COVID protocols again in a pandemic and people don't go into stores and they, drive-throughs you saw during that time stayed open because, you know, and nobody expects or wants that to happen anytime soon.
How many employees do you have in the store? What's the maximum at the?
There'll be 12 at the, the peak shift. There's three different shifts. You know, roughly six to two, two to 10, and then the overnight shift.
Do you have adequate parking for those employees? That's part of your plan?
Yes, we do. So we have, like I said, over a thousand stores, almost a thousand of these fuel stores. And the parking that we've provided here is very typical. I could speak also to the conversation about truck circulation. The site is designed as a, with our standard requirements. They're very generous. The drive aisles are generous. There's 10 by 20 spaces. There's foot parking spaces. There's, the dimensions aren't on here, but they should be in excess of 30 feet or 20, I'm sorry, in excessive 25 feet. Yes, so they're 30 feet lanes. So you go. So you go on most, uh, most other uses of this type, they're going to be tighter, uh, and, and harder for trucks to circulate. Um, with, um, I think there was some discussion here about the, the tightness of the canopy. Was that a question that came up? So, so this, so where our canopy is designed so that if there's a car fueling here and a car fueling here, someone can go between them. And that, and that's another thing you don't see everywhere. So we go to the extra expense of making this larger so that, uh, there's comfortable circulation through the canopy. I could speak to the, the lease, it's a 20-year initial term, followed by six five-year options for a total of 50 years. EV, so you'll see at the Woodbridge store, there's, there's a ton of Tesla chargers there. We have EV at a lot of, uh, our, our stores, but we don't, we don't own the EV. We, we, um, have third parties, Tesla, uh, Electrify America, Iona. So we offer our sites to them and we say, well, here's the site, would you like to put EV on it? And, and if we find someone interested, that's how we do that. We are complying with the, the state statute that requires that, um, you know, it's usually either one or two make-ready positions are available. Make-ready means we run the conduit and it's ready, um, if and when it's ever required. Um, but, you know, it, it's very possible that Tesla or, or another, uh, EV provider will be interested and they'll, they'll want to go on the site. Um, I can go on the truck deliveries if you like. All right, so there's five different kinds of deliveries. Uh, let's, we talked about the, uh, the fuel deliveries. So those are on-demand, as Mark said. So, you know, as the fuel gets to a certain level in the underground storage tanks, there's an alarm that goes off and then, uh, fuel is dispatched to the site. Uh, that could, that's probably going to happen about once per day. Uh, that whole operation takes about 30 minutes. It's gravity-fed, so the, the truck, tractor trailer, as he said, will pull over this area. They'll, um, put the nozzle, uh, connect it and then, uh, release the fuel. And it's, you know, it takes 15, 20 minutes for that to happen. It's just gravity-fed into the, into the tanks.
Sure, I, I think the concern was more during your, let's say a lunchtime hour or breakfast hour when you're the busiest and if you're trying to get a tanker truck through the slate, because they've got to maneuver, driving over certain aisles to get to that point. Is there a way to control that so that doesn't happen?
Um, so all of our, our truck deliveries, um, know to not come on the site during, uh, peak hours. Uh, that's not to say exceptions don't happen. Uh, if, if there was a case where, say, someone parked a truck with a tra, you know, like with a towing boat or a landscaper, the, the truck, uh, the delivery truck is, is just going to wait until it's their turn, uh, until they can get in there. But, you know, we try our best, uh, to keep all deliveries coming off-peak. There, as I said, there are five kinds of deliveries. We control, uh, three of them very tightly. So, uh, dairy, uh, delivery is, delivers our milk, ice cream, uh, iced teas. Um, and those, those come, uh, about three times a week. Uh, in a WB50 tractor trailer, they're going to park right here. Uh, the delivery door is, is right here. So they're either going to drop out the back or, or on the side. We have Fresh Channel, which is our baked goods, breads, pretzels, uh, and those come daily. And usually that's a nighttime delivery. Uh, we have, uh, McLean, uh, which is, uh, provisioning. So they, they deliver the bulk of the products to the store that aren't, uh, vendor deliveries. And they're also two to three times a week, also off-peak. So those three we can, we control. They'll have a, a time that they show up here that's going to be very consistent over time and they know not to come during our, our peak hours. Uh, vendor deliveries are, uh, we have some control over vendor deliveries. So Coke, Pepsi, Tasty Cake, um, those types of deliveries, they come, you know, as needed on the, on a route. So they'll be delivering to other places in town and nearby towns and, uh, they'll stop at the Wawa, they'll probably park here. And we, we ask them to not come to Wawa during our peak hours as well. Uh, we have less control over them because they're, you know, independent companies, but we do, we do ask, um, and we do have some leverage because we have so many stores that they, they deliver to. I think there was a, a, some question about lighting. So our lighting is, is very good. It's LED, all downlit, uh, everything, um, I, I'm not going to speak to foot candles and all that, but, uh, we're very proud of our lighting, that, um, it's state-of-the-art, as is everything on the site. Uh, this trash enclosure will have a compactor, um, and a shed inside. This is a little shed that keeps our, uh, some of our power washing equipment, that kind of thing. Um, all the fuel equipment, uh, associated with our, uh, fuel offer is all state-of-the-art. The underground storage tanks are double-walled, um, tanks with, uh, the, the space between the tanks is monitored. It has a brine solution in it and we have, uh, monitors that go not only to the store but to headquarters. So if any of the alarms go off, uh, related to the, the fuel, um, it sounded right away, not just at the store but at headquarters. So, um, and New Jersey is great, love it or not, that we have fuel attendants. So, uh, as far as incidents, uh, related to the fuel, uh, are minimal because we have professionals that are, are putting the, the gas into the tanks, uh, into the cars.
What is your definition of off-peak hours? What's your definition?
Well, it's probably easier to say peak hours. So, um, you know, six to eight in the morning, um, 11:30 to one, uh, is the lunchtime. And then, uh, a later peak in the afternoon, uh, four to six is, uh, is more fuel and, and people grabbing maybe milk, uh, or, or a dinner item.
I, I guess my, my question, I should have clarified it better, the, the, uh, the fuel tanks, you know, what would be the hours off-peak that they would be filled up?
As I said, that the, the tanker trucks are going to come as needed, but they're aware of our peak times and they're, they're asked to avoid them and typically they will avoid those peak times. Um, they can't always, you know, they're going from one store, they're going back, they're getting fuel, they're going to another one. Like it's a non-stop operation all day for them. So, um, there may be times when they come, uh, during a peak time, but we, we try to avoid it, uh, but we can't all the time.
And your employees on the midnight shift?
Mm-hmm.
How many employees do you have on the fuel part and on the store part on those midnight hours?
We typically will have four associates working overnight. Uh, there's, could be three, uh, there's usually one to two, um, at the fuel canopy and at least two inside. So every site's a little different in just the demographics and how busy it is overnight. I suspect this store is not going to be busy overnight, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to wait and see. Once it's open, um, then we'll, our manager will, will manage the labor.
So your minimum is two and two?
Yes. Well, like I said, three as a minimum, so it could be one outside, uh, and two inside.
Chairman, just fly-through, you had said that there were more than three cars, that you would send a car forward to park and bring your order out. Will there be a camera so the person inside the window can see that there's more than three cars out there?
Uh, I.
How would they know?
Uh, we do, we do have a camera on, I'm not sure directionally what it shows, but we do have a, a camera in the store that shows this lane. I'm not sure where it's visible, so in other words, if, if associate's at the window, uh, serving someone, um, is that monitor right there that they can see it? I, I don't know that. Um, we actually haven't built one of these yet.
You could say that though, you, you would have a monitor there for the person at the window. So they, they would know that the person looking for their order should move forward so the cars don't stack up and drive.
Yeah, we, I can provide an answer on how, how that will be handled, but, um, that's, that's a good point. Just not tonight. I'm not, I, I just have to look at where that, um, that monitor is.
Are you going to put these, uh, fly-throughs in all of your, your Wawas if you, if you can do it?
Yes, yes. So all of our, this is our, our new model. This is, uh, what we're getting approved everywhere. And, and it does have fly-throughs, so. Thank you. Uh, that's, this is our, the exhibit with our building. And here is the, the fly-through pickup window. Right here.
So you're going to, you're going to possibly put them in the one on Route Nine in Cerval? Put one there and the one in East Brunswick on, uh?
Well, that's, uh, I'm not a part of that group that's going back and retrofitting, just like with the one in Woodbridge that just was approved. I'm not involved in that, but we do have a team that is, is going, uh, one by one to retrofit stores where it's possible. So they'll look at the site plan and see if it is possible. Uh, it's not, it's not just the site. You know, the, the circulation has to be right. There has to be room, you know, on that side of the building to put the fly-through. Uh, I think that's going to be a much slower process trying to retrofit, but we are doing it.
Sometimes a drive-through requires a variance that, that's a trigger. Is this considered a drive-through as far as a variance is concerned?
I don't believe so. But I did not see there an issue with the drive-through, the site. Again, it's an industrial zone, so look for industrial requirements. I didn't see anything that prohibited the drive. I could have missed it.
Mobile order pickup window. Um, but I take your point. There were a lot of variances more than usual with this because of the zone. Um, but I think we're, we're ideally suited for an industrial zone because we, it's an amenity for, for that zone.
Okay, I have a question. Your report that you made, all of the issues that are on here, uh, they've been taken care of, resolved?
They haven't been yet, but the applicant's engineer indicated he would revise the plans to address all the comments in the report with exception to the different waivers that he discussed. So as a condition of any approval, it will be subject to them providing revised plans to address all the conditions in my report as well as Mr. Fowler's report.
And you understand that? If we approve this, it, it's conditions on the engineer's report?
Yes, I, I'm trusting our engineer that agreed to do that. I'm not, I'm not the design engineer, so if he agreed that stormwater, uh, would be fixed, if it's broken.
The parking lot rating, you want to have a minimum of 0.75%, it's a couple areas, like 0.71% or 0.72% against. Stevie, those areas slightly more difficult spot rating. Uh, there are a couple of clarifications for the overall storm zone, but I think otherwise the storm design itself.
So I can, I tell you, maybe I should have started with this. So the relationship that we have with the applicant, they are the developer. And this is how we, uh, seek approvals for 95% of our locations. Developer owns a property or they get under agreement to purchase the property. Uh, they negotiate a lease with Wawa. Once that's executed, then they're, they're responsible to obtain all approvals. Um, uh, municipal approvals except for building permit and health department. And then, once they obtain those approvals, they will clear the site. They will bring it to grade, uh, compact it and put in all the stormwater infrastructure, bring utilities to the site. And then they walk away. And then we come in and we spend millions of dollars to go vertical. So everything, all these improvements you see here above ground, Wawa will, will take over and will do that. So we, we come in near that, the end of their approval process, um, and get our building permits, board of health, signed permit, those kinds of things at the building department. Uh, and then we start building. They are, they are responsible for, on the approval side, to meet our specifications. So we gave them all of our Wawa specifications. That's how they were able to, to design the site with 30-foot drive aisles and 10 by 20 parking spaces. This looks exactly like a Wawa should look, in my opinion. So, um, when they say that they can comply, what they're saying is they can comply with Wawa standards as well as the township's requirements.
Satisfied with this check?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's subject to future reviews by our office, but they're indicating they can comply.
Fowler, you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions or anyone?
Out of curiosity, how did Wawa get its name? Was it the goose?
It was the goose.
It was the goose, okay.
So, Lenning, a Lenape Indian word for goose, was Wawa. Um, and that's where we got it. And our mascot is a goose. Sure. I'll be here all night if, if anything else comes up.
Good job.
Can I drop the mic?
Mike, we'll bill charges.
Thanks.
All right, I think we'll be bringing, just, we'll do some brief planning testimony as well for the experience.
I'm going to see it, yes.
Please, yes.
Yeah. Put my, put my stuff down.
Sorry, telling the truth, it was good, nothing but true, so I hope you got it.
I do. Okay, could you please say your names and board in your position?
Sure, uh, it's Christopher Nussar and it's Nancy U-S-S-E-R, the apprentice planner this evening, uh, with French and Perlo Associates. Um, I am a licensed professional engineer and currently in the state of New Jersey. Both of those licenses are in good standing. I graduated from Rutgers University in 2006 with a bachelor's of science in civil engineering and have been practicing in land use, both planning and engineering since. Uh, and in fact, been accepted before over the boards in the state of New Jersey in those capacities.
And we, we reckon, we, you can proceed.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I think there's a, we added a little bit here to my, my outline, so if I get a little choppy, I apologize. Uh, some additional pieces of relief here. Um, as I have it, I always like to start with what that relief is. So to finally, just to make sure we're on the same page. We were talking about the lot area at 3.22 acre, where 10 is required, a lot width of 165.9 feet. There are 500 required, the depth is acceptable. And that is for Lot A, the lot that the Wawa will be on. Um, we have various relief for the signage, including the height of pylon along Main Street at 20 feet. The fact that there are two pylon signs where one is permitted. The four building, building mounted signs, um, where again, one is permitted and the signage that is on the fuel island, um, on the, underneath the canopy. I think that's.
Again, the signage is a little bit, if I call it, it's like, I think I was talking about building, but they have.
Understood.
Kind of signage that, that way back there.
Yeah. Right, and I think as presented, I think that just generally, so we're, well, in general understanding, understanding that we'll provide some additional information to the board on what definitive numbers are in sizes and compliance. Um, but just generally, so we'd be speaking now, that's what that signage relief pertains to. Uh, we have the trash enclosure being accessory structure, uh, where it would be required to be half side yard, so 25 feet.
Believe us, I agree. Believe us, I agree.
It's, it needs to be 75 feet?
100 down.
If it's? All right, you know, the side yard.
So either 75?
Yeah, the side yard is 75. Could be 37 and a half.
Yes.
Where it's proposed at, let me see, I have the number again. 2.5 feet off of the southern property line towards the bus depot, and then the canopy is within the front yard both of both Main Street and side street. And that's all. Purpose of record, so we're clear. To Crossman, it is at 56.9 feet. And to the new right-of-way line on Main Street, 86.5 feet. Think that's, was there anything else relief wise that you had written down?
With that covered.
So want to take a holistic approach and look at this site as a whole, all the variances kind of together. So, you know, first, want to start with the positive criteria. The bulk variances, none of these are really hardships, right? Nothing, we're subdividing a lot, creating a lot. We can't make a hardship when we do that. We're building features in here. Yes, there are some constraints on the slot environmentally, but realistically, I think we should view these all in the context of a C2 variance where project advances at least one purpose of the municipal land use law and the benefits of the relief outweighed the detriment. We'll talk about the purposes that are advanced in a second, but really, looking at the bulk variances, generally, the ones that lead to the lot, the lot area, the lot width. We're deficient in size, we're deficient in width, and I think the board already kind of had a bit of a discussion about this already that this is a Wawa, right? It doesn't need a 10-acre property. It would still develop on the same footprint. They have their standards. This is what it would look like. There would just be six and a half or six and three-quarters more acres. That would be undeveloped, that, you know, again, doesn't result in a larger facility, but underutilized land. It's a standard for an industrial zone where you permit this in your B2 and B3 zone districts, and in your B3 district, you only require a 20,000-square-foot lot and 100 feet of width, where, again, we're well in excess of the lot area and do exceed what that width requirement would be, and a place where you would allow such a use. So, by opinion, it's an appropriate size and appropriate relief for what the use is. Because again, I think they're tied together, but here, you couldn't say, we should create this and put a warehouse on it. That wouldn't be appropriate. As it comes to the signage, I think really when we look at the signage, that having additional signage, having taller signage, the real drivers for that are for safety, to be able to see the site, for approaching motors to know where to go, to have consistency between stores, right? Every Wawa is signed the same. That's why this is their sign package. They provide the signage as they put it up on the buildings. It helps people identify the facility as they're coming to it. I know where Wawa looks like, and when I see that signage, it helps direct you into it. So you want to have that signage, again, for that reason. Really, in an industrial zone, you don't have necessarily passing motors coming in, or you have deliveries coming in, you have a trailer coming in, you have employees coming and going, but you don't have a retail sales component. So, you know, having multiple freestanding signs isn't something that you would put in the zone. I would note that for service stations, the sign requirements for service stations do allow for two freestanding signs. So really, this isn't inconsistent with other portions of your ordinance where, you know, for this type of use, it is something that you planned for. It's just the fact that we are in this industrial zone and there's a different standard, and I think with good reason, it's a different standard. As it goes to the trash enclosure, the trash enclosure really is a, it's an impact upon ourselves. And when, again, the same property owner owns both of these properties, it's only closer to the bus depot. And it's in the rear of the site, close to the regulated bunkers. That's a gated area of the bus depot where they're storing vehicles. So, you know, the impact upon neighboring property is pretty de minimis. You know, and I think there's an advantage to having this trash enclosure tucked away into the back of the site so it's less visible to anybody driving by, even people coming in and out of the site. If you're coming in and going to that front entrance on the store, then it's nothing to do. Down, there we go. You have to leave when everything, if you're coming in off of Main Street and you're using this front entrance here, you're going to, you know, are you going to see the trash enclosure? Probably not. So I think there's a visual benefit to placing it tucked away in the back of the site. And then finally, the canopy, canopy is not meeting the front yard. Again, this is, you stand at 100 feet, it is an industrial zone. So, you know, generally speaking, in industrial zones, you want larger stuff, actually have larger buildings to hit taller heights. So you want that further away from the road so they don't have such an imposing feel. This is the canopy. It's not a wall structure. It doesn't have the same impact upon the, on the street, on the streetscape. You know, it doesn't have the same visual impact that you would have from, you know, a 40-foot tall manufacturing building. And so I think it's appropriate, the location of it. And just calling back to your B3 zone district, this would be allowed. Your standards there, we, the front yard is 50 feet, which this would ultimately comply with. So, again, on that, I think it's given the layout of the lot and the fact that what the usage versus what the zone is and what the standards are as they relate, I think it's an appropriate location for that, for the structure. To the use variance, the board may grant a use variance where special reasons exist, even though it's a positive criteria. In this case, special reasons are that the property is particularly suited for the use and that the project advances at least one purpose of zoning. In my opinion, this property is particularly suited to the proposed use. We are located on a county road on a corner lot. It gives us access to a signalized or a signal-controlled side street. The property is located in an industrial zone, which again is something that is generally your highest impact area, right? This is where you allow manufacturing, industrial processes to happen, and you try and keep it away from your other uses. And so this use is, in that sense, less intense from an impact standpoint. Biggest thing I think that you would look at difference-wise is from a traffic standpoint, and as you heard from the testimony, the road, Main Street, can handle the traffic that would be generated and was testified to. A lot of the traffic coming in and out of the site is pass-by trips, so there are trips that people that are already on the road, that are coming through the area, that are going to stop if they're going to get their fuel, get a sub, whatever it may be, and then continue on their way. So it's not necessarily a new trip that's been added to the road. It's one that was already present in traffic flow. We also note that at a catty corner across the street, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be helping on this one, that there is already retail uses in here, right? There's quick traffic across the street, so this is an important use within this zone. I think one other thing to note about it, too, is that, and it came up earlier about your conditional uses for service stations, and one of them is that you can't have more than three gasoline service stations within one linear mile of each other, so along the road. And in this case, there's none. There's no gas stations within a mile. You have people traveling, you know, that would be traveling along this road with you guys, and you need gas, and where do you go, right? Okay, I'm going to go hop on the parkway, but I need gas first. You have to deviate from the route and you're putting traffic in other places because there isn't an opportunity along Main Street in this whole portion of the borough for gas. So you're, we're adding in a service that actually helps the overall community by keeping traffic those past five trips in this place instead of sending them somewhere else to another location to get fuel. So, to the purposes of zoning, I think luckily they all stay the same, so I can be. There are three that I've identified. First is Purpose A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate user development of all lanes in the state in a manner with both public health, safety laws, and general welfare. There's a couple ways. Number one, the sites being redeveloped over top of what was, as we discussed earlier before, contaminated site. This is part of the ongoing remediation efforts on the site is to provide a cap on here. So this site is helping to, again, remediate this property. And the second would be, again, to the signage, providing, you know, efficient and sufficient wayfinding to the site so people can find their way here. We don't want people making a left turn out of Main Street, but at the same time, we don't want people making a left turn in because they've missed it and they're trying to turn across traffic. We want people to know where it is and to be able to efficiently get in, get what they need, and move on without creating issues. So, you know, the signage helps to load that. The other two would be to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of usings, which is Purpose G, and then Purpose H to encourage location and design transportation routes, which promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of such facilities and routes which result in congestion. So, again, this goes back to the location of other gas stations in this area of the borough that you're providing for a need in this area. You're providing for this use in this area where there isn't a location on here. Again, the fueling station, it's B2, B3, and the closest B2, B3, this is B2, I believe, right here, right along this portion of Main Street. And then, kind of in the area where they had discussed that they had been looking to put a site over by the church over there, there's some B3, so there's really a big gap in there where there isn't an opportunity to put that. So again, we're giving an opportunity for voters that are already on the road, that are in this area, have the convenience of the store and of the gas station, which will promote better traffic flow and reduce the likelihood of congestion elsewhere. As you know, every variance needs to satisfy not only the positive, but also the negative criteria. For the negative criteria, it must be found that the project does not create substantial detriment to the public good or create a substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The proposed project will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good, as we discussed. It is less intense than the permitted usage within the zone, you know, in this industrial district. It has no features that would create a nuisance, any. There's no substantial impact to traffic, stormwater, there's no negative visual impacts from the site. I think there was some discussion about lighting, intensity of lighting. Again, we're in an isolated industrial district. We don't have any residential uses next to us. There's no sensitive receptors around this property where, you know, you have somebody's home or something like that where it could be impacted by by any of those, any of those potential detriments from the site, not this, again, that there are any. The lighting is, as you can see in the plant, sufficient and with site without creating impacts at all. In my opinion, though, the fly-through lane will allow the site to operate more efficiently without creating on- or off-site impacts. Little aside, when they put a Chipotle in, out where I live, they put in one of these Chipotleans, and I sat there and thought, holy cow, somebody's going to sit here and order a burrito and then wait for the thing to get made and pick it up at the window. That's going to be a disaster. And it's the same thing. You order on the app, and it's great. I order on the app, I leave my house, I get down to Chipotle, they tell me what time it's going to be there, I pull up to the window, they hand it to me, and I move on. I do it quite often. I don't know if I'm proud of that or what, but I will say I've, and again, this is the Chipotle version, not the Wawa version, I've never sat behind another car at the window. I've pulled up behind another car that's leaving as I've pulled up, but I've never, I've never waited. When I pull up to the window, I don't sit there long. There's always somebody that comes, gives you your item, and you move on. This is the same scenario, the same type of situation, not your traditional, again, drive-through, just a pickup window. It's an added convenience, and if the Wawa by me has it, had it, or gets it, I'm sure I'll be using that as well, frankly. When it comes to a substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance, it's my understanding that the borough is pursuing redevelopment of the site, which would actually allow this use within, on this property. So while we have, maybe, I wouldn't say jump the gun, while we're trying to get this project moving forwards and not waiting for the statutory timeframes that kind of can bog down a redevelopment, the fact that this use is being is being contemplated by the borough shows that it wouldn't have a substantial detriment to the zone plan or master plan. I think irrespective of that, what this use is, and the offers that it gives to the borough would not result in any substantial detriment. I think finally, we need to look at, because it was a use variance, the Medici standard or the enhanced quality approved, where we must reconcile that the proposed use was omitted from the ordinance. Now, in an industrial zone, you would not expect to have a Wawa. You would not expect to have retail. You wouldn't expect to have a gas station. And for the most part, in an industrial zone, it's not appropriate. I think, my opinion, that for this site, in its very specific situation, the location, again, the site suitability that we talked about, that it makes sense where it wouldn't elsewhere, which would be reason to omit it. You wouldn't want it at the end of Crossman, you know, where everybody's coming down to a cul-de-sac and turning around. That wouldn't make sense. But along the county road, that's where it makes sense. So omitting it from the ordinance, you know, and from the industrial zone, makes sense. But, again, I think also allowing it in this location equally makes sense. So, on the whole, it's my opinion that the relief that is requested can be granted without substantial detriment to zone plan, master plan, or the public good. Sorry. That the benefits of the relief that's being requested Uh, that the um, benefits of the belief that's being requested, uh, which results in um, development of this site, you know, the addition of all the things that we've talked about. What will be a very attractive, um, as you can hear, well-run site outweigh any of the detriments that may come from granting of the belief.
Are there barriers required for freestanding signs?
Yes. Okay. Oh, yeah, you're right. Right, there should be fifty feet, right? And I think that he, he thought on that is if the sign was back fifty feet, it would be in the middle of the site. And again, for the same reasons, you wouldn't be able to see it on a retail site. We want to have those signs closer to the road. An industrial site, different story. Um, but on a site such as this, you want to have it in a prominent location where safety, safe, it's visible.
I'm paraphrasing, but you said that building this on top of the contaminated site is beneficial in what way?
So it's, it's capping the site, which is preventing people from um, accessing what is contaminated below it. Generally speaking, as part of any remediation effort, you put controls in place, um, be it engineering controls or institutional controls. An institutional control would be a deed notice, a restriction on a property um, against say residential development, something like that, because our, is contamination. An engineering control is putting in place a barrier on the site so that you can't get into what may be impacted. So um, building pavement, you know, parking areas, um, you know, even the basins with a liner in it and appropriate separation and a soil barrier in there. Those are all presumptive remedies for contaminated site. So, you know, by putting this in place, it's putting an engineering control on top of the site.
I don't know about the specifics, but I know of a development that went up and then they found that the groundwater was contaminated and building on that site did not help the problem.
And it's, so the engineering control isn't about solving the groundwater contamination issue, right? The site has a groundwater contamination issue, there's testimony on that. And that there's ongoing remedial efforts in the form of, I believe it was um, injections in there to stimulate uh, the degradation of those chemicals. Um, it's about keeping a separation for the public from being able to be impacted by those, um, you know, by whatever that contamination is. That's what the engineering control is, it's a barrier. Um, it's not, it's not the remedy. It's a protection layer.
I always thought that it had to be remediated before you could build.
Well, in this case, I think the testimony was that the soils are clean. Uh, there is some residual groundwater issues that they are actively working on finishing up. And that they have um, clearance from their LSRP that there is no concern to them constructing on the site. I mean, you don't necessarily have to have the site 100% clean to be able to redevelop on it. A lot of times redevelopment is part of the remediation effort.
And this was the case for the first transit site, uh, Bus Depot as well. Bus Depot did service the cap of the site. There is groundwork contamination currently there beneath the site. And on the site, we have access ports where they go in and do their injections in the pavement. So this is all happening at the same time as.
Not the LSRP, I know they're happening, but I, I couldn't give you any sort of.
It's something, it's not an exact day, it's something they monitor. They, they continually check the contamination, see what impacts of the content of their, their injections are and, you know, kind of proceed on based on that. But it's definitely for a number of. That's going on, on the first transit.
I've done some remedial work in the past. But the thing with it is, especially with groundwater contamination, is not something that you can staff and clean soil. You can pull out and you can clean it. The groundwater always takes a little bit more time, so it's a, it is a bit of a process or in the process um, of doing it. Again, they're, they're doing everything that's necessary and required by the state. They have the right professionals sitting there looking at it, making sure that it's all done safely. Um, but yeah, I mean, as Mark said, it's a process.
From legal standpoint? They are the ones who make the decision. Prior on the property, we want to keep the remediation and we have to keep it reported. Be a intervention when they're satisfied, they'll be.
You know, part of the cap is also preventing, you know, a lot of the water as far as, you know, on our site, actually getting into the ground and contributing to that groundwater. So, you know, that's one of the, one of the roles of the cap. Uh, but yes, as, as Chris was mentioning, you know, it's kind of developing a site is part of the remediation process to put that cap in while we're worried about treatment is coming. But the soil treatment, the soil treatment has already taken place. The soil has been removed from the site, uh, what needs to be removed.
I'm familiar with residential oil tank leaks. That has to be remediated a hundred percent before anything is done. It's not that you can do anything until it's completely resolved. And I guess that's what I'm surprised with this.
Yeah, it's a different kind of contamination, yeah. The, the, the LSRP has given clearance to build on the site.
I, in my distant past of um, doing remedial work, I did a lot of oil tank remediation. And I mean, people will transact properties and that legacy contamination will, will still be there. And people will have escrows and your insurances will take care of it. So there can be transactions that happen, people can sell property even when that.
I don't find that to be the case.
Many cases dealt with a new homeowner.
In fact, the attorneys uh, will tell you never to buy that house if there is an oil leak. And they're advising the buyer.
No, I, I understand. And but again, in, in this case, I think, you know, what it is, you know, there is a LSRP, which is a licensed professional in remediation that has looked at this. Has said it is okay, that this is part of that remedial.
Well, it's also one reason it can't be residential. That's why it can't be used for residentially. That's another, that's, that makes it completely different from a home or a building or even condo, let's say, would be different.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Did anybody have any questions on the traffic that weren't answered by Mark? If not, we don't need to call anyone else, but if you have any specific questions.
Well, we're providing a full report to the board, right?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't believe so. I think as I indicated, county road, county jurisdiction, the county has a project that's going to improve this intersection. They may have to modify the signal timing because of this use, but that'll be coordinated with the county. So I, I don't really see a need for that presentation this evening.
What about circulation on site? Are you okay with the circulation on site yet?
The only issue we had was with the fly through lane. And I think based upon the testimony provided and, and possibly some additional signage, I think that's probably about the best you can do. Because there's really not a lot of background on how they operate. But I think after the explanation was provided, we're a little more comfortable with what the intention is.
I think honestly, we couldn't really add, that's, this is what we, this is what we know.
Yes, as far as parking, they've got more parking than is required by ordinance, so parking's not an issue either.
You mentioned that their, their lanes are wide, is that true?
That's correct. They've got thirty foot aisle with twenty four could be provided. So that their parking places are ten by twenty. A lot of times you have nine by eighteen, so they're above a lot of your standards for this type of use.
What about the pedestrians? You're okay with pedestrian on site?
I think pedestrian with some of the modifications requested by Mr. Fowler and the board that they indicated they would comply with, that should address the pedestrian. The, the board typically grants sidewalk waivers. Technically, your ordinance says you need to have a sidewalk between all the parking places that front on main street and the roadway. People aren't going to use that sidewalk, they're going to get out of their cars, going to walk to the building. So you're putting sidewalk in for no reason. So you, you typically grant those type of waivers. So where they're proposing, it seems to be feasible with how the people are going to be walking on the property.
I think we're making it, it was going to be a condition for the walkway from sidewalk next to the entrance.
Correct, you had, you would agree to additional conditions. And I think also Mr. Fowler asked for trying to prevent people from walking toward the fly through window. To try to direct them to that walkway, you've agreed to address those. Yep.
Mr. Fowler, are you satisfied with everything that was on your report?
We have nothing else and we'd ask you to grant the application.
I'm going to open this application to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in reference this Wawa application? Every night I close the public portion. But it's the pleasure of the board in reference this application.
Can I just go through the, the conditions first?
Yes.
Okay, so what I have is um, first show potential uh, future uh, cross access to Bus Depot lot. Then uh, reduce the number of freestanding signs to only one of the freestanding signs will be twenty feet. Uh, comply with all requirements of the engineer's report, the satisfaction of the engineer. Same for the planner to board the planner. Divide an additional pedestrian connection from main street to the building, which we understand will eliminate one part of the space. The um, board will be approving all building signs that I've shown. The, for the resolutions adopted, it'll be a uh, list to make sure the variances are fully accurate. We'll add one bench and one bike rack. Some kind of sign for striking to stop people from blocking the drive aisles by fly through lane to the satisfaction of the board and engineer.
I think, do you want to put stuff about attempt to uh, keep deliveries for fuel and off, to off peak hours? Not be a specific, but just attempt to do that.
And to keep deliveries to off peak hours.
No outside tables or eating outside on this condition?
If you want it, right. You can put in uh, no outdoor cable, outdoor seating area up there.
Mr. Fowler, is there anything that you want to add to this?
Just the conversation in my report, I suggested having a handicap space on the, on the side of the building also. Because it's too extra, so if you have the, have this ability along the other side, you know, that is if no handicaps spaces on that side. Is there enough spaces so that we can drive out for one more handicap space on the other side of the building, so we have three tubs?
Correct.
Those are the conditions, I guess, I need a motion.
The board's heard the conditions. Need a motion on this application. I have a motion and a second to approve this application. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein? Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Gesandi?
Okay, your application's been approved. We will moralize it at our next meeting in May.
We'll memorialize it if we get all the documents.
Do you have your planner send me a copy of his outline?
Okay, next is resolutions. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the resolution on seventy six Williams Street?
Yes.
What's the pleasure of board concerning this resolution?
Remove the resolution to be approved as written?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito? Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes. Okay, the next resolution is to Gallen Street. Everyone had the opportunity to read that resolution?
Yes. I move the resolution to be approved as written?
Motion and a second to approve it, roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Gesandi?
Yes.
Okay, the third resolution, it was the extension that we gave to Clyde Auto Recycling. So everyone had the opportunity to read that one?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve?
I move that the resolution be approved as written?
I second it, roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Gesandi?
And the last one is, has everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes of the March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Move that the minutes be approved?
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Gesandi?
Yes.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Yes. Go move.
Motion second, meeting's adjourned.